Hello? Can you guys hear me?
We'll just wait till Scott gets back. He just went to the restroom.
No, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, July 10th. A reminder to everyone that the meeting is being broadcast and recorded. And I will call the meeting to order at 7:16. The first item on our agenda is the Chair Clerk's report. I have tabulated the emails received from May, about May 15th, which is about five days before the election, and we've received 10 emails in that time. Some of them weren't really directed to the Planning Board. One of them was answered by the Board of Health. One of them went to the Town Manager's Office, but there were about 10 emails. Next on our agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? If you have public comments online, please raise your hand. Mark?
Thank you. Good evening.
Recording in progress.
Dr. Sodi, 119 Main Street. I have one observation. I was surprised that I came in. And another question. The observation is this town hall went through upstairs a whole new personnel sweep. That's the one observation. And I'm going to ask the Planning Board, which is actually not one new member in the Assistant Planner, is the Planning Board going to be in the same goal-set mind and going forward with how it's been? Or is there going to be a new change because of new people?
I think a planning board always changes with new members, and even the existing members might react differently or have a new mix when there's other people there. So I would expect that there'll be some consistencies with the board and some changes, which I look forward to.
Okay, and the other thing is when I came in, I was told by Jasmine that I asked her about the papers that was on the table. That's about the first time, and I don't know how long, that I actually got those, everything in that packet that you get before they actually got first talked about. This is the first time I actually got to see them. And I'm very happy and thankful for that because that shows a little transparency of what there is and what's going to be talked about.
That is Jasmine. She is obviously setting a high bar.
I keep that high bar there so you don't have to go over it too much to do better. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Seeing no hands raised online, we will move on to our first public hearing, which is 34 Albert Ray Drive. It's T-Mobile. Jasmine, do you just want to tell us where we are with that?
We received an amended memo and revised plans per the request of the board stating that the structures that were proposed, we noticed there were inconsistencies with the images that were shared. So we did receive updated images and an updated memo. I believe we asked for an updated application as well. Dominica, I believe I saw you had sent that to Deepa specifically. Did I miss that? She's here.
Madam Chair, through you.
Please go ahead.
All the documents that were requested at the June 26 meeting were sent by email to both of the planners the following day.
Yeah, I think the requests were, and just so that we can clarify, that we're talking about T-Mobile, that it's a removal of six existing antennas, installing three antennas, three radios, and one mount modification. Is that correct now?
So, Madam Chair, through you, I did send a memo, as we agreed upon at the last meeting, that is a statement stating that. We agreed not to update any application. I would just supply the one cover letter stating the exact scope.
Are those all the same?
Those are all the same, yeah.
Oh, each?
I think, no, I think it just, is it just each one?
Is it just one letter?
Okay, just one letter. Yep.
Okay, so we might have extra?
Yes.
Extra there?
Yes.
Oh, right. This is the top one. Maybe there is more than one.
No.
The top one is about make, is, what we had noticed between the T-Mobile and Verizon was that the Verizon drawings weren't showing the four-tiered tower. It was only showing three tiers. So we had asked for just a confirmation that the structural analysis took into account all the levels of the tower. And so that's, I think, what this letter is.
And, Madam Chair, through you.
Yes.
I also supplied a letter stating that it does. All the documents show the four carriers.
Right, right. And I saw that in the new drawings, that they were showing the four carriers. And I thought the question during the meeting, and I was just trying to clarify with this, with you for T-Mobile, is that they are removing, I think our documents originally said that you're removing four, but really you're removing six, and that's what the drawings show, that you're removing six. Is that correct?
So, through you, Madam Chair, that is correct. T-Mobile is removing six antennas to replace with three new antennas.
Okay. And that's, we just wanted to make sure that was true and that's consistent with the decision document.
So is there a letter that says that? Because this letter, this particular paper does not.
Did you find that those are all the copies of the same, they're identical copies?
Yes, this is the second one here that was sent earlier before the revision.
Okay.
This was the July 8th, but it doesn't specify the numbers.
So this is what I have in front of me. Again, can you just clarify?
Oh, is it, do you have the July 8th one there?
I have July 10th.
Yes, this was the previous one that they had revised and sent that one.
So it does not list the change in numbers?
Yeah, so Deepa's saying that she thought at the, and I think Dominica is saying that she sent it, that she wanted to clarify that we noted that the documents, including the applications, said the removal of four, but really we're removing six.
Other than the updated plans, these were the only documents I received.
So is that something you had sent, Dominica?
Yes, Madam Chair. The following day, I sent an email with the attachment to both of the planners.
Can you share your, share that letter?
Or just maybe the email addresses that it went to?
It went to both the Assistant and the Town Planner. Let me just see if I can find it quickly on my computer.
Yeah, I mean, it does seem to be updated. It is accurate on the drawings, and it will be written that way in the decision.
So, Madam Chair, through you, I sent a letter. It's dated June 27, sent by email. And the letter serves to correct and clarify that the scope of T-Mobile MetroPCS application involves removal of six existing antennas, the addition of three new antennas, three new radios, and one mount modification. Any application documents that were submitted on May 7, 2025, OLC states that the application involves removal of four antennas a all.
Okay. Were you able to find that, Jasmine?
It was in the continuancees.
Oh, okay. It was in a different folder. Okay. There we go. Okay. So are there any other questions on the T-Mobile application? Anna, do you have any questions on the application? Okay.
Questions?
All right. Then why don't we just do this one? Do them one at a time?
Do you want me to print this updated quickly so you can read it from here?
Does everyone have a copy of the decision?
She read it out loud.
No, we meant of the decision.
Right, but I would like to update it before you read it, so that way it's correct with the six antennas.
Was it emailed to me as well, or to the?
It was emailed to Amanda.
Oh.
Is it possible to email it to me if it hasn't? Thank you so much. If we're all going to look at our email version or whichever.
Yeah, I was just making, what we want to make a decision on is really on the approval document. Does everyone have that in front of them?
If it went to my town email in the agenda, I'll open it up right now.
Yeah, so there should be the MetroPCS. But that's right, the special permit modification document. Now Jasmine, for the signature, she's going to print out a new copy because this one still has Peter Matzek's name on it.
Right.
And she's also going to correct the
Four to six.
The four to six, which was not corrected on this version. So, but if anyone else has any, the three points there is just naming the different modifications, the removal of the antennas and the installing of the other antennas. It notes that the modification is an eligible request under federal regulations, and it notes that the proposed modifications will not extend above the current height of the tower. The rest of the conditions are very standard, safety, work hour.
Since we don't have Kamilu, we have five zero watt, or is it four?
We need, only need four for a special permit.
So you may want to correct that number.
Yes, that's what I was talking about earlier when I said I needed to take out Kamilu, because I had included him on the vote. So it was part of the change that I made when I sent him to the printer. And then I think, I didn't print, I only printed you the Verizon decision. I'm so sorry.
I do have the Verizon decision.
You do, but you're the only one for someone. I can share it, bring it up on the screen if you'd like, so that everybody can look at it right now.
Well, you can do that, but unless there's any other questions for T-Mobile, why don't we just take a vote on that one?
Sure.
So. Anyone would like to make the motion?
A motion that we approve the, how do I say this?
Motion to approve 34 Albert Ray Drive T-Mobile application.
The amendments?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? And a roll call vote?
Deepa Wankadi.
Anna Tesmaniski, aye.
Scott Bellater, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that one is approved, and we will make the modifications, and we will sign them at the end of the meeting. How do we get? Do we need a wet signature for Anna, or can she?
She can sign it tomorrow. She can, or whenever she's available to sign it.
Until late Sunday?
So Monday, Monday day?
Might be a little tricky. I'm in Boston Monday, Tuesday. So there's no way to do it remotely? Has to be live signature?
It has to be for the registry because it has to be recorded. But I can, I can talk to you offline, and I can.
Yeah, let's talk offline. We'll figure it out. Maybe we'll connect Sunday night or early Monday. Okay. Cool.
All right, so the next one is Verizon, same tower, same condition, same document.
That one didn't have any adjustments, though, right? I thought the wrong numbers were on one of them, right?
Right. Correct. No, this one has, and correct me if I'm wrong, this one is that they're adding three antennas, three antenna mount pipes, and one hybrid cable. Right? She's nodding. I think that is correct. I did note.
Yes, Madam Chairman, through you, it's, the proposal is to retain all nine antennas that are currently on the mount for addition of three new antennas, mount pipes, and cable, same centerline.
Yeah, it doesn't talk anything about removal, just about addition.
That is correct.
So. I'm wondering, though, if the language in the two. I'm just looking at the two decisions, and just the language is different for the, for T-Mobile, we actually name out the applicant seeks to modify blah, 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 the four, the six existing antennas. For the other one, we just refer to the drawing, so I wonder if we should actually use the same verbiage?
Absolutely.
Other than that, I don't have any changes to that? Are you guys good with that modification to make sure, to have the language be the same?
Yeah.
Okay. Then if everyone's comfortable with that, while Jasmine is making that modification, go ahead and take another motion?
So I move to approve the 34 Albert Drive, or Albert Ray Drive, Verizon.
I'll second that.
Second, and a roll call vote?
Deepa Wankadi.
Anna Tesmaniski, aye.
Scott Bellater, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So we will have those modifications by the end of the meeting, and three of us will be able to sign them, and.
Break something out with Anna so we can file it.
I'm around two on Monday, and I know where Anna, I know where Anna lives.
We wouldn't be able to file it until Monday, though, until we have all of the signatures with the clerk.
Right. You said you're getting back on Sunday, Anna?
Yes, I come back late Sunday.
We can, we can coordinate this a little bit later. I think we can.
Coordinate.
We had a.
Yep.
I think we can have it wet signed on Monday morning. So.
We'll figure something out.
Just wanted to be transparent that it could go to the clerk until Monday.
Yes. Okay. All right, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, so we will take care of those for you and get them submitted on Monday.
Thank you, and good evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know you have some time constraints there I want to be respectful of.
Snuck, I'm just pulling up our agenda. I can stay a few more minutes, for sure, probably like 10 minutes more. So if there's another item, I'll stay as long as I can.
Do we need four?
Is there any other item where I'm important, where it's worth?
Okay. All right. Well, then why don't we, why don't we go on to the third public hearing on the agenda, which 240 to 260 Pleasant Street, Metro West Facilities LLC, this is the soccer field. And we will need to read that in, right? Because it is a new listing. Why don't I do that, since you are busy?
Thank you. Well, I don't see any representative on for them. There's nobody on for them. Sorry, that's why I looked perplexed. There's nobody on for 240 to 260 Pleasant.
Oh, they, they knew they were on the agenda. They asked to be on the agenda.
Becca?
And no one's in the waiting room?
Becca's saying something.
Hi, everyone. Through the chair, applicant for that requested a continuance for conservations meeting, which is on Monday. I imagine that they had intended to request a continuance from you all, but may have forgotten.
Oh, okay.
Maybe they, do you get Peter's emails? If they sent it to Peter, does it bounce to you? I don't get them.
Not, not that I know of. I would assume.
Just in light of what we just learned, we give them the benefit of a doubt. I think it's reasonable for us to assume they would be requesting a continuance.
Because they may have to make modifications based on conservations.
Okay. All right, so.
We want a motion to continue, and to what date?
Our next meeting would be
The 24th?
July 24th.
I'll make a motion to continue that hearing to July 24th, 2025, in light of what we learned from our Concom expert.
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa Wankadi.
Anna Tesmaniski, aye.
Scott Bellater, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So we will continue that to the 24th and see what happens then. All right, so moving on, the fourth item on the agenda is a scenic road, scenic road application for regular tree maintenance from EverSource Energy.
Yes.
Do you want me to, are you?
Oh, sorry.
Do you want me to read it in?
Yes, please. I don't have it up right this second.
Okay, I will read it in. The Planning Board will hear the petition of EverSource Energy requesting scenic road permit per Chapter 40, Section 15(c) of the Massachusetts Zoning Act and Chapter 249, Section 20 of the Ashland Bylaws. The applicant is proposing to perform circuit vegetation maintenance for utility pruning. The trees are to be pruned within the right-of-way of Cross Street from the intersection of Howe Street to the intersection of Deer Ridge Road, and on Howe Street from the intersection with Quarterville Road to the Ashland-Hawkington Town Line. So, well, I know Becca is here, and, I'm sorry, I cannot read the name.
Matthew Mitchell from EverSource and Russell Holman from EverSource.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other introduction that we need, or can they just jump in?
Matthew, would you like screen share capabilities?
Yes, I would love that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Should be all set.
All right. All right. So at the beginning of the year, I presented to the board that the 455 H3 Circuit would be up for pruning this year, which is, the majority of which is in Ashland. And originally, I only put the permit in for Howe Streets. And we were originally not planning on pruning Cross Street, which are the two scenic roads on this circuit, because we were prioritizing the central arteries of the circuit. But additional resources have been made available, so we are reincorporating the rest of the circuit, in this case, specifically Cross Street, into our pruning cycle. Our clearance is 10 by 10 by 15 feet. That's 10 feet to the sides and 15 feet above the very top wires on utility poles. That is an industry standard for a five-year cycle, which is what most of our circuits are pruned off, pruned off on. Basically, the less frequently we prune, the larger clearance we would need when we do have to prune. And the pruning would be done in accordance to ANSI standards, which is the general standards for the industry. It's not specific to utility work. Cross Street, the scope of the work is from its intersection with Howe, down to a few pole spans south of Saddle Hill Lane. The circuit's already been notified. The residents know that we're coming. I've not actually received any call-ins of people wondering what we're doing. But if anybody does call in as we get through the work, I'd be more than happy to meet with them and talk about the work, and try to make everybody as happy as possible.
Could you say how those notifications are sent out? Is that a paper notification or by phone, or?
So normally, we have an automated letter sending program, but that's currently down, so we've actually been hand notifying. So people would have received a sort of flyer with a diagram showing our clearances and the customer service number below if they want to call and have questions.
Okay, thank you. Becca, is there anything else you can describe to us about the process? Really, just because we have new members, and these do come up on a regular basis, this kind of tree trimming?
Yes. So just for the board's information, I had done a site walk with Matthew on this to go look at the trees and the, well, branches on the trees that are being pruned, the scenic road bylaw, any trees that are within the right-of-way on those scenic roads. If they're going to prune any major limbs, that triggers this hearing process. And your code specifically states that it's in the tree warden's opinion to cause, sorry, to determine if the major branches would cause the eventual destruction of the tree if they were removed. So for your reference, I did not see any pruning branches that were planned that would cause the destruction of the tree. There are a couple trees that are in worse condition and probably need to be removed, but that, to my understanding, is not being proposed in this, in this hearing.
Full disclosure, this circuit has had poor reliability figures for the last few years. I am planning a removal, a tree removal project. But again, that's not having anything to do with what we're discussing today. I'm just letting you know that that is in the works for a future planning board meeting.
I'm sorry, was that, that there may be trees removed, but not, not during this period? Is that correct?
Yes. None of the work we're discussing right now involves tree removal.
Okay.
But I am putting a list together for later on this year.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any questions from the board about?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just to understand the process. So when the crew is going down the street, they're measuring that box basically around the wires, and then they're trimming up to that thing, or up to that measurement? Or does somebody go in front of them and like mark on the trees what needs to be trimmed to, and then the crew comes and trims to those marks?
So the crews that we use, this is what they do five days a week, 365 days a year, so they know what the clearance is. Sometimes they have to go a little bit beyond or a little bit short of the clearance, just so that, just to make the cut healthy. So, you know, if they have to, if the 10-foot mark to the side is leaving a foot of stub on a, on a tree trunk, you know, we're going to go a little bit beyond the clearance to make that a healthy cut.
Good. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions? All right, if there's no other questions, we can go ahead and make a motion?
Make a motion to permit request for scenic road, um, tree pruning.
Second up. And a roll call vote?
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Scott Bell, tier, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is approved. Is that something that, I don't remember. Is that something that requires our signatures? Is there a document? Oh. Okay, okay, great, thank you. Assume everybody's okay with that if I just sign that one. All right. Okay, bookkeeping. Yeah, okay.
And Tricia, at this point, unless you need me for the minutes, I'm gonna, I apologize everyone that I'm traveling for, for business and I have to get going, but I wanted to be here for the, the super majority ones.
I appreciate you being able to come on in that situation.
No worries.
So, thank you.
Okay, take care. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night.
Okay, so, um, since we only have three members, obviously, I, I don't think we're going to do anything off the task list and have any discussions there. Usually those are things we try to discuss with the full board. We also have no one here from the comprehensive pla, oh, well, you, did you attend the comprehensive plan meeting? Oh, actually, you stayed with us and they went to comprehensive plan. Okay. Okay, so we don't have an update there. There is no update right now on the design review committee. CPC obviously did not meet, as you said, they're taking the summer off. And Metro West Regional Collaborative, I did put Yolanda in touch with you, which I had forgotten to do earlier, but.
No, thank you.
Okay.
I need to respond to that email.
Okay, um, so that, uh, so that can get going and you can understand that organization better. Okay, administrative matters, the associate member search process, this is, we have listed it.
I saw it yesterday.
Right.
I haven't heard anything. I've gotten no responses. I don't know if I get notified, if somebody noted, fills out that form online for the clerk or if she gets notified.
I think she gets notified, but then she sends it out to the appropriate board.
Yeah, I haven't gotten anything from her then.
Yeah, so, um, I did send out in an individual email, I copied Jasmine and Melissa on that. I sent it to, um, Sam, his full name, I cannot remember, it's in front of me. There are also two other people. Sam was the other person who had run for during the elections, who, who did fill out a talent bank form and expressed interest. I haven't heard anything back from him yet. I also sent it to two other people. One who had filled out the talent bank form, um, I want to say maybe in March, um, around, right around.
It was an email, yeah.
Yes, and I had told them that there wasn't a spot open at that time and we would be filling in the associate position soon after the election, you know. And he had asked me to, um, to let him know when that happened and keep him in the loop. So I did send him another email. And then there was a third person who was also potentially interested in, in the election, but who never, never kind of acted on that and was kind of just more getting information, who also might have an interest in this position. So those are three people that I've actually talked to about it. I did send emails to all three of those people, copy Jasmine, but I haven't heard back from anyone yet. But I'll follow up with that and just at least get a yes or no if they still have an interest. But otherwise, I've also a few, if there's anyone else we know, there certainly can get the word out to more people if you, if you know more.
So nobody's actually applied for it yet?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Well, um, no, I would say that, um, again, Sam, I can't remember his full name, did fill out the talent bank form, but it was a little while ago. You know, it was right around the time of the election, I think. And so I did reach back out to him, but I haven't gotten a response back to confirm that he's interested, so.
The ad, I think, went out yesterday or day before. It was a pretty, you could not have missed that.
Okay, good.
So I don't think there's responses yet on that.
So, yes, they might. But anyway, hopefully, um, because I think some of the, even for things like, um, the cell towers, which is a special permit, and so it requires four votes. And it would be very helpful to have someone in that six feet. It is a special permit. They can sit for that vote. So, um, uh, so that would be helpful to have someone there.
And also sets somebody up to be able to sit someday.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody.
Actually had some very good associate members in the past year and a half, so. And we're sorry, we were sorry to lose both of them, actually. Okay, so, um, planning office updates and new applications, ongoing projects?
So we've got, obviously, YMCA on 30 Memorial Drive that will be on the next hearing on the 24th. This doesn't necessarily impact the planning board, but we did receive also a 40B application for 55 West Union Street. So we do have comments that were sent before the Powell letter, uh, the application. And if you're comfortable sending those comments to the ZBA now that the application is official, I would certainly do that if the board would like. You also have the opportunity to review those documents and make additional comments if you would like. You're also welcome to attend them as a resident. You just must state, if you're making public comment, that your name, and I'm speaking as a resident, not on behalf of the board. So that will be on August 12th, unless we find a huge clerical error in the filing.
Yeah, so this was for the project across from the Dunkin' Donuts down near where the YMCA will be, that we've already commented on. So it, it's certainly fine with me to forward that letter to, um, to the zoning board of appeals. I haven't, well, I guess since they just put in the formal application, I haven't had a chance to see if the design submitted varies at all from the design we looked at. There was a significant difference from, on Waverly Street, from the design we commented on and the design that actually was proposed, so, um.
Share with the board if that's the documents?
Yes.
40B documents with the boards, you can review them. They're just on a shared drive.
Yeah, why don't we?
Yeah, just so that we're not commenting on something that has changed.
Yeah, that's out of date. Are they, um?
They're not posted yet because we, um, wanted to get past the meeting on the 22nd first before we posted things for that far out. And we also wanted town council to review it before then. If they get us back the review before then and say this is complete, I probably will post it for the August 12th meeting because it's a large filing. I would like people to have opportunity to see it, but I didn't want to post it until.
Yeah, so I guess if you can, maybe if you can send us the link or, or the, or the drawings, whatever, whatever's most appropriate, and maybe attach our letter to it. So that we'll have the letter on the email, either the drawings or a link to the drawings on the email, and we can kind of see if it's, um, you know, see if they're compatible. Would it, would it be better for us to kind of take a look at that first before?
Before I send it, yeah, just in case there are discrepancies.
Yeah, why don't you hold off, just so that we make sure we're not giving them something that doesn't make sense.
We've gone through that circle, cycle.
He, he read the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, didn't contribute to any of the writing.
But I did appreciate the, because I know it was very last minute to have someone read through it, and I. So, um, yeah, so why don't we hold off on sending it to the ZBA until, until we make sure our letter makes sense with the materials that they're receiving?
Absolutely.
So, okay. And anything else upcoming that you know of?
Nothing upcoming.
There was a walkthrough you had, timing for.
Yes, so I had reached out, but I have not heard from Camilo yet. He's the only one. So far, everybody said everything looks good but the 15th. Did you send me an email that said different?
I did not send you an email, but I think 15 does not work for me as well.
I think there was, there was one date I couldn't make as well. I could make the, I could make the 15th, but not. I, I think it was the Monday.
And we're allowed to have a walkthrough with everybody at the same time?
Yes.
As long as I post it, yes. It has to be posted if we're all there. But if for some reason we can't all make it and you have to go individually or in groups of two or less, we don't have to post it.
Yeah, so there's, um, and I can't remember what the exception is called. We had, have gone through that with Lisa Mead before, that there is an exception for site walks, um, to, so that everyone can see the property and understand it. Obviously, just while we're there, we're not commenting on, um, our feelings, our personal feelings about the project. We're just asking questions and trying to understand the site.
Okay, you can do the 21st, Tricia, sorry. So not the 15th and not the 21st. So we can do the 16th or the 23rd at 6:00. And I'll just reach out to Camilo with those two dates and see if he's available.
Wasn't it the 20th?
23rd, sorry, the July 16th and July 23rd. I had July 15th, July 16th, July 21st and July 23rd. And I was told no 15th and no 23rd.
Oh, yes, okay.
I can't do 16th.
So the 23rd then? Okay, let's, let's do it for then. I'll post it. Clerk's in tomorrow, I'll post it tomorrow.
So, uh. See, I thought you had said the 22nd, the Wednesday, um.
She had 15, 16, 21, 23.
Okay, maybe I was thinking about.
Because I had ZBA on the 22nd, that's why I didn't offer that. I'm not, you may still, if you would like to go without me, that's certainly acceptable.
Does 15th work for you, right now?
It doesn't work for Scott.
No, leave it. I think, I think I will be able to, I think I will be able to make that.
Are you sure? Because if you want to do the 22nd without me, that's fine.
What do you want to say?
I haven't heard from you.
Yeah, so before you post it, why don't you, we get information from Anna as well, but I think I will be able to. I, I should have plenty of time to get back, but if not, I will get a tour from, I mean, I know the YMCA people, so I can, I can get a tour.
Um, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. It is a very heavily wooded site, so just.
Nice shoes.
Yes.
Vitos probably.
And probably pants.
Yeah, so don't, don't.
I won't post it yet.
Yeah, yeah, wait, let's make sure we hear from Anna and Camilo to try to get as many as possible. Once we have a date that works for most of the board, most if not all the board, then let's also offer that date to, um, the design review committee and to, what other, other, I think you had mentioned someone that might be interested as well in other departments.
Kevin from DPW.
Okay, DPW, yeah, to, to, if others that would like to join us as well. Okay, so then we have upcoming meetings, July 24th. And so what do we have? We have YMCA and we have, um, 240 to 260 Pleasant.
Yes, also, I'm sorry, 55 Tilton should be applying very soon.
The one that you reviewed?
That we.
Okay.
So they had asked, uh, just for a, a, a nonofficial review of the application on Tuesday. So I expect they'll be submitting, they won't make it in time for the 24th, but they'll likely be on, if they get it in the next week, they'll be on the first meeting in August.
Okay. Yeah, so the meeting on the 24th, we will have two introductions to two different projects.
Yes.
So we may set aside an hour each, you know, I would say.
Certainly, at least for the Y.
Yeah, and then, yeah, it might, the other one might not take as long.
It just may not be as detailed after the conservation, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and then I would, I would just ask to, um, be careful not to, not to add anything else to that meeting if we can help it. Sometimes we can't, sometimes we can't help it, but.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then we'll see what happens for August, uh, August 7th. Any questions with that?
There was an email from the Board of Selectmen. I'm so sorry, I don't have my notebook with me. It's my problem. They had sent a save the date to the
Oh.
Planning Board about a joint meeting.
I remember someone mentioning that.
Susan Rovey? She did say joint meeting, right?
Is that the one in October?
Yeah, what's he?
Yes, I just wanted to get the date of it to you.
See if I penciled it in.
I'm just searching joint, maybe I should just search October because I'm searching joint meeting and it's not coming up. I just wanted to make everybody aware of it.
Uh, 15th.
Thank you, October 15th.
Yeah, Wednesday. So Wednesday, October 15th, comprehensive plan, joint meeting, planning board and select board. So one of their present, official presentations to the boards. Can't make that one.
And you did tell us that ahead of time, and I did reach out to, uh, Michael, our town manager, and he did confirm that if you would like, you may watch the video and they would be open to accepting your comments for the next few days if you would like to submit comments. So that was kind of him to.
Is it, uh, are those available on, live on Zoom? I don't rem, I don't know.
The joint meeting may not be live, but I can share that link and information with you so you can watch it.
So I didn't know if it was on, if it was on Zoom.
I believe they usually are, unless, unless it's, um.
Got it.
Yeah, unless it's executive session there on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it would be, okay.
But if you're interested, no pressure, but I could send you the recording.
Does it have to be that one day?
Yeah. Of course.
I was impressed that you already knew you were available. I was like, I don't know that I know my schedule out more than three weeks.
Annual conference.
Three weeks is good.
Isn't it? That makes me feel better, thank you.
All right, so then we have, I think, the last thing, we do have meeting minutes for June 12th. I need a minute, I haven't had a chance to look at them.
And we did get, um, Anna and Camilo's Mullen affidavits stamped in with the clerk, which was very kind of them to do and send, so those were all set. And his vote was good.
Sorry, meeting minutes are way at the.
They're way at the end, sorry. Would it be easier if we slipped them in the pocket and the front paper clipped, do you think? Maybe we can discuss reorganizing it at some time. We're working on reorganizing the whole office right now. Maybe we just have a meeting minute binder?
No.
No?
Paper. Sustainability. No, I think this binder is big because of the package that we have here, so hopefully.
Well, EverSource and the.
Yeah, that's a big package there.
And also the T-Mobile, those will be coming out. So we can keep them in there if you'd like to keep them in for, until like a hearing is closed, maybe? So you can review the hearing process?
I haven't thought it through completely, but I know, um, sometimes it's just nice to go back and refer to various meetings and what we had talked about at that time.
Absolutely. Yes, we're revamping everything, so.
Yeah, so now's the time to kind of do it.
It would be great before we get cemented in our ways. Not that I am opposed to change, but you know.
There's, there's some things, um. There's, there's some things, um, on line forty-two. It's a minor thing, but we're talking about the Select Board agreed that the. Okay, no, never mind, I understand what we were saying.
Okay.
I got it. I'm remembering the situation now. Okay, I think I'm, I think I'm good.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second to.
And roll call vote?
Keep going, good day.
Get piloted, aye.
And Trisha Kendal, aye. We only need three for meeting minutes.
Thanks, yes.
And, um, I think that's it. Do you have any?
Yes, so I would like to just, um, just for complete transparency, um, I also consult for the town of Lunenburg. Um, I'm not a full-time planner there, but I do consult for them twenty hours a week. Uh, it's not something that I do that overlaps my Ashland time in any way. Their meetings are Monday, which works out perfectly, so I get to attend their meetings Monday via Zoom, and I work on their things over my weekend. I don't work at them and, on my nights. It's not anything that overlaps, but just in case you may hear my name come up in another community, I didn't want anybody to say like, oh, my goodness, why? Or anything like that, so you may see my name on some things there. Um, but I just wanted to complete transparency. It's been approved. I've signed a disclosure document with each community, so just wanted everyone to be aware that if you did see it, it's because I'm there.
Thank you for that. That's sixty-hour work week.
It's, I'm contracted for twenty. They're very kind to me and they tend not to use me that much, which is very, very good of them, so.
Is it a new start?
Is it what?
Is it new, or have you been doing it?
I started there two weeks before I started here, so I signed the contract there two weeks before I was offered the position here. Um, but I did make it very clear that, you know, Ashland, I was looking for a forever home as a planner. Ashland feels like it, so if it ever becomes, you know, one becomes too overwhelming, I would have to say to Lunenburg, I'm so sorry. You know, I appreciate the opportunity, but I, I think it would be in your best interest to find somebody else who has more capacity for this right now. Ashland will be my priority always, so.
And that, that contract has a certain duration on it, is that right?
We had agreed to six months or until they found a planner, so it's not an exact date, um, so I am hoping that they find a planner. They did have an entirely new staff overturned, their admin left and their planner left.
Can't relate.
And they have a new town administrator, so they've got a lot of changes, so I'm hoping by September, October, maybe filling that position. That's my hope. Um, but they don't, they have an MBTA consultant, so I don't work on their MBTAs, so it's strictly just reviewing their special permit, site plan reviews, A and R subdivisions, and those types of things. I don't work on their zoning either, so.
I certainly understand how, uh, stressful and scary it can be to not have a, a, a planner, um, uh, in the office, so, um, hopefully they'll.
Kudos to their staff. They've been keeping it together. Their chair has been full-time dad, full-time planner, for free, so.
Any, uh, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, so.
No, please.
In the beginning, on your clerk's report, you said, you mentioned that there were ten emails.
Yes.
And I, in my head, assumed based on no other real reason that we were going to talk about those.
Oh.
Ten emails. Do we ever like, I mean, I know you, you acknowledge them, but do we like?
I actually don't receive them, so I don't even know what goes to the planning emails, I don't think. Unless it gets forwarded to me and I don't, it doesn't come through as your planning email. Unless I just get automatically CC'd and I don't know that it's gone to you, because if, I don't receive anything that says it's been from planning.
Oh, we'll have to look on that because I, I thought.
You don't get the Ashland Planning Board emails.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I thought you and Melissa are both supposed to get, the five of us and our associate member, when, when they're with us, and the two of you, I thought are all supposed to be included on that Ashland planning. Um, so let's, I'm pretty sure that's how it was with Peter and Alvaro.
So I wonder if his name is still in that.
Yeah, let's.
Maybe, because I only have things that I've sent to you guys on that. Um, I don't have anything from that.
So like when the Select Board sent that date to you, they sent it directly to you and not to the board?
Directly to me, not to the board.
Yes, so I, I didn't, yeah, I did not get, that, I did not get that date, though I remember hearing about it from someone. It must just been in conversation.
I think you just happened to be here when we were talking.
Maybe, maybe that was it. Maybe that was it. Um, yeah, so the other emails that come through are then, are ones that, some of them would have been before you, you got your Ashland email, so you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have seen those. Um, but other ones that come through are both from people from the community. Um, well, they're, they're all from, from residents, but sometimes, um, like for instance, there was, um, an email that you probably did receive about some, um, problems with the Pond Street.
Yep.
Um, trash, right? So, um, so, so, yes, you, so you should be, you should be on there. So, um, Mr. Gupta from the, who's the Director of the Board of Health, immediately jumped in and he said, we'll look at this. So it was a Board of Health, it went to various committees, various boards, and so he jumped in, he's, you know, this is our jurisdiction, and he jumped in and said that they'll look at it. Another one, um, so was sent to the Planning Board plus other, I don't remember who, but other entities, but Diane, um, Wortensen from the, um, Select Board, um, Selectman's Office, yeah. Or Town Planner's, Town Manager's Office, I believe. The, the email was actually addressed to her, but went to a lot of other people, and I, um, asked her if it was resolved. She's like, yep, it's a hundred percent, I answered the question, it's a hundred percent resolved. It was just, it was just a question. So other things go back and forth a little bit. So basically, this is just so that we all get the emails, but they get responded to in some way, not necessarily by us, um, but they get responded to in some way.
And the idea behind this, to make sure the community knows that we are reading those messages, it's not being ignored, and that's why we're kind of only talking about how many we received instead of going into the details of it, because they're obviously taken care by different groups of people, until something really needs to be brought in front of them.
But how do I know that they're getting responded to? Because I'm not, I mean, if they reply all, then I do know, but if they didn't reply all and you just responded directly to that person, how would I know that it got responded to?
Because you, well, we will get, we'll get Jasmine on, but otherwise, like, you know, because I'm now the, it, it was, it was Kate who was the clerk as well. It was her job to respond, and so now it's my job to make sure it gets responded to, right? That there is a response, right? And so once in a while, um, once in a while, Kate would say during the board meeting, oh, and we have a few things that aren't responded to yet, and, you know, to make sure that, that they were responded to. Th- those were things. Um, sometimes we get email in and it's just a very typical response, you know, to, there's a, there's a text I can send it to that we agreed on some few years ago, um, that basically thanks the person for, for, you know, being involved and, and for writing to the Planning Board, because some of the things are just a comment and there is no response. Legally, the board has no obligation to respond to any email or to any question asked during public comment. It's not our, we, we can if we choose, but we're not obligated to. Um, but this at least lets people know if they're sending an email versus coming to the mic. If you come to the mic, we're sitting here, you know, we're hearing you. If you send an email, you don't really know if anyone's read it, but by getting a reply, you at least know your email was received and you're getting a reply. It doesn't mean you'll get the answer you want or the long discussion you want, but you will get a reply. So, does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. All right. Um, anything else?
Quick observation, I noticed the header says Office of Planning and Economic Development. Is that, um, the? Is that, is that mean that the role is a little more broader? And how are we bringing the economic development part into this mix in this long run?
So it means that my role is broader, not the Planning Board's role.
True.
So what that means is expanding my reach to, uh, build rapport with local businesses, learn what their needs are, learn how the town can help them, look at our community spaces, what is it our residents need, um, how can we bring them together? You know, how can we improve their, um, walkways, their roadways, their trails, their bike paths? So it's really looking actually at the community as a whole, long-term growth, big picture, comprehensive plan ideas, and saying, looking at those, we have initiatives and a task list that you can go through on how to achieve those goals, and that's really part of the economic development part, is bringing in businesses, maintaining businesses, being business-friendly, bringing in, um, other, you know, we don't want big Amazon or anything in here, but like bringing in more mom and pops, but it's based, it needs to be based on what the community wants. So I guess there was a restaurant here, sorry with an M, that everybody loved.
Mazza.
Mazi.
Yes.
Oh, Mazi.
Thank you, yes. So that is no longer here, and that's something that Beth Reynolds, my director, has heard a lot about because she has built that rapport with the residents and the businesses, and everybody says we would love to have something like that here again, so that's something that we do have our mind on, our eyes open for. So when developers come in and they say, you know, I'd like to put in mixed use, you know, where are some areas that you have zoned for that? We keep those types of big picture projects in mind, and sometimes we can work with developers and say, is this something you may be interested in? So we can develop Ashland in a way that's pleasant to the residents that live here.
Yeah, so Beth Reynolds' role, Beth Reynolds was the Economic Development Director for, I'm not sure, quite a while. I mean, I think she, I think she was the first person in the position.
She was, yes.
But, um, her role has been folded into now that it's not just a town planner, it's a, that, and Economic Development Director, which isn't uncommon, I think, in, in other towns. It seems to be the way things are going. Um, and, um, so, um, and Beth is now in a, the assistant, one of the two assistant town managers, and planning falls under, falls under her, so.
I think what will be beneficial because of this new role and what Mark asked right at the beginning, right? I think we never had that component in our planning board concept, so as you talk to developers and if you have been sharing these business ideas with them and they actually implement it, it'd be great as a board to know about it.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think, um, that's a great way to make sure that what we're doing here really has sense beyond just approving buildings, because it's tying into that economic development of the community. So it'd be great to have that regular feedback from you, from what you've had conversations with developers, I think, because that's definitely a new role.
And Wareham, when I worked there as the assistant, we worked, we did the Mass Downtown Initiative, where you completely rezoned the entire downtown, and we did bring together a committee, and we did have one member of the Planning Board, uh, one member of the assessors, Board of Assessors, um, and we had mostly mem, um, business owners and members at large of the community. It was, I think we had seven business owners, and we met probably quarterly to discuss long-term visions, how can we get there? A lot of the work that Beth done, has done here already, which is amazing, is some restaurants or businesses have come to her and said, we would like to work together to promote both of our businesses, so she's done the work of creating pop-ups. That's how we ended up with the corner spot, and we're working to see what other businesses want so that we can boost everybody's business. And the businesses want to collaborate, and we're very, very excited to work with them, so we are actually planning a meet and greet in October. And if you would like a Planning Board member, we can't have a quorum of the Planning Board, but if you would like to be in attendance, I mean, they're not, they're not private meetings, they're, you know, open, they're not posted because it's just, it's not a board. It's just a meet and greet, so we'll post it, hey, meet and greet, anybody who wants to come, come help yourself, the same way that I think they post when they do drop-offs at the corner spot and things like that. It'll probably just be in the flyer, um, in the newsletter. We'll post some things up around the community about it, but.
That's good.
Yeah, we're excited for it. And then also, next meeting we'll have, we're meeting tomorrow to discuss the Comprehensive Plan and our big picture goals, so I'd love to just give you guys some feedback on what it is that we looked at. It's really to get an idea of what we're looking for and then what the workload is. So are these actually attainable goals, or do we have some choices that we have to make? And that's something that will be presented to the Select Board this weekend, and that's what you guys will be discussing in October, is the final presentation of the Comprehensive Plan after these discussions, but it doesn't hurt to keep you apprised of it now.
So is the Comprehensive?
It's the Master Plan.
A, a meeting tomorrow, or is it a subset group that's meeting tomorrow?
It's a subset group.
Okay.
I don't know if the entire Comprehensive Plan Group will be there.
Because I thought they usually met on Thursdays opposite us, or?
I don't think it's all of them. It's department heads mostly.
Okay.
So that we, we can determine when looking at these goals, do we actually have the capacity to meet them? Um, and when we're looking through the strategies on how to get there, maybe there are better strategies. There was one recommendation already that somebody should create, you know, a complete GIS system of all the open space and trails in town. Conservation happens to already have one. It's just not live. So things like that, that maybe we didn't know another department had, it just helps to bring everybody together, look at the big picture items, work smarter, not harder.
Right.
So.
Great, sounds good.
It should be good.
Great.
Do you want to send those letters so that we can sign?
Yes, I have them printed right now, so let me go grab those.
All right, so, well, while we're doing that, we can adjourn our meeting. I will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call vote?
Keep going, good day.
Trisha Kendal, aye. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, Mackie.